For our regular Board of Supervisors meeting. It's Tuesday, February the 6th, 2024, and we are in the Board of Supervisors hearing room in Building G Visby. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action, and if you will stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting, and the Board may vote to go into recess into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We begin with the roll call. District 1.
Crosby is here.
District 2 Supervisor English is present. District 3.
Supervisor Judd is here, and I'm on the phone. I don't know if you recognize that yet.
Yes, we have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 316-666-737. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the Board prior to the start of the meeting. And we will begin announcing today that because of the administrative time that it takes to put the call to the public together, we're setting a time of 9:00, beginning March the 1st. So the requests need to be in by 9:00 so that we can put them together and not be rushing around at the last minute. So let's see. Note that some of the attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, and this means that some presentation materials displayed at the Board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. And we begin with the call to the public. The first one is Allison Morris on Teams.
Can you hear me okay?
Go ahead, Allison.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Allison Morris from Portal. As an informed voter and concerned citizen of Cochise County, I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak today. I want to thank our hardworking Elections Department for posting the ESNS voting equipment demos and the Q&amp;A transcripts on their website. This kind of transparency and voter education increases my understanding and reinforces my confidence in our regularly-tested voting machines. There remains, unfortunately, a small but vocal group of voters who do not share this trust and insist on changing various aspects of our well-functioning electoral process. I'm asking Supervisors Judd and Crosby, however, to acknowledge the facts and respect the preferences of the overwhelming majority of voters in Cochise County. Surely you are aware that about 80% of Cochise County voters prefer to vote early using mail ballots. They appreciate the extra time, convenience, and flexibility. There is very little chance that they'd want to return to a more restrictive system that would force them to vote in person on a single day. Of the 20% of voters who go to the polls on Election Day, the vast majority vote in precinct polling places for the same reasons just mentioned: convenience and flexibility. You can remind your constituents of this, Supervisors Judd and Crosby, and the fact that County Supervisors Association of Arizona is unanimously in favor of vote centers. It would also be helpful if you explained to them about the impossibility of hand-counting ballots. Not only does the excessive time, inaccuracy, and processing of counting ballots make this method unrealistic, statewide recounts are much more likely now since Republican legislators lowered the threshold that triggers them. The thought of hand-counting ballots at this point is preposterous. Even using our current system of tabulating machines, followed by a bipartisan hand count, the 2024 election calendar has impossibly tightened. As you know, lawmakers are scrambling now to fix this to avoid putting ballots for overseas military personnel and our state's presidential votes at risk. I might remind your constituents of these facts, Supervisors Judd and Crosby, and encourage them to reconsider their unrelenting and unreasonable demands for changes to our well-established, accurate, secure, and efficient election system. Thank you.
The next speaker is Radford Hyde on Teams.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista. Lindsey Graham, Mitch McConnell, Liz Cheney, Mitt Romney.
Madam Chair, if we may, I apologize.
Radford, can we stop you just for a minute? We're having some background noise that IT is going to try and figure out where it's coming from.
And so, Madam Chair, if we could have five minutes, and Mr. Hyde, if we could have five minutes, we'll be back just to clear up the technical issue.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute break so our IT can figure out where all the strange noises are coming from. All right. Mr. Hyde, are you still on the line for Call to the Public?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Should I start again here?
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista.
Could you speak up just a little bit? You're soft now.
My name is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista. Lindsey Graham, Mitch McConnell, Liz Cheney, Mitt Romney, and Peggy Judd. What do all these prominent names have in common? They have betrayed everyone who is a freedom-loving American citizen who supported them and voted for them to get into an official position of power only to yank the rug out from under the people that they propose to represent. Ms. Judd, you have touted your views on election integrity and actually gained massive support for these views. You obviously lied about all that. Members of the Freedom Team, state legislators Jones, McGar, and state Senator Wadzak are all supporters of or actual sponsors of HB 2547, HCR 2032, and SB 1286, all regarding eliminating vote centers and reverting to precinct voting. Ms. English already publicly opposed and voted against these measures at two County Supervisors Association legislative policy meetings. Ms. Judd, you are facing criminal charges for rightfully delaying the certification of the election canvas for 2022. So, Ms. Judd, I will ask the questions that reporters should be asking now. Did you, as a Republican, hand over the chair of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors back to a Democrat, Ms. English, who is in favor of maintaining the illegal and vulnerable voting center elections instead of Patriot Supervisor Crosby because you are attempting to gain favor with the Arizona deep state who is prosecuting you? Hmm, no? Did Jeff DeWitt, who is caught on audio passing along bribe offer to Carrie Lake to leave politics for a while, bring his checkbook out for you to turn tables? Did someone else? If there was a better term than disgusting for any description of your behavior and backstabbing, I would use it. Thanks to you, the election integrity issue that you so graciously pursued and essentially lied to all of us about that Cochise County led the nation in will dry right up. Why don't you go back and get interviewed by the national media that you were so giddy about and explain yourself there? Remember, since you did not attend the ESNS demo, Senior VP and Chief Information Security Officer, Chris Walachin, admitted that the accreditation of the lab that certified the ESNS 6.0.4.0 system used in Cochise had lapsed before the 2022 election. He admitted also that their Express Bowl tablets, which are part of their system... No, it isn't. I timed it myself. No matter what part...
Next speaker is Tricia Giradet, and she's on Teams.
Good morning, Supervisors. Yes, this is Tricia Giradet in Sierra Vista. Although not a planned part of my confluence, I have to react with some distress to the prior speaker and similar extremely hostile, I guess, words and actions. I wish we could be more civil about our disagreements. And along that line and disagreement, I will say that our 2020 and 2022 elections were accurate with their results. No court has found otherwise. There were some problems in other counties in Arizona, for sure, but none that affected the outcome of any of the elections. In Cochise County, our results were correct. Again, I ask, as I did last time, if the Elections Director comes to the Board with results that are certified or sworn, whatever the right word is, as correct, will you accept or canvass those results as required by law? I want to thank you again for approving the voting centers for Cochise County for the 2024 elections. They are the least expensive and most accurate option for the taxpayers and the voters of Cochise County. Personally, I prefer to vote by mail, as do approximately 80% of voters. If you thought there was a question about the handling of ballots, and if your question was based on a supposed scandal in Pennsylvania, you should know that the claim of mishandling has been withdrawn and apologized for. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kara Harris, and she's on Teams.
Good morning. This is Kara Harris. I'm from Wetstone, Arizona, and I am part of "We the People" that our Constitution reminds us we are your bosses. We are not the peons below your feet. We are endowed to be the people. On the border invasion, processing is aiding and abetting, simple as that. So what are our enforcement agencies? All of them, from the top to the bottom, including the Border Patrol and our Sheriff's Office, are in violation of their oath of office to defend against foreign and domestic enemies. So by the way of the Constitution, they're supposed to be preventing and not processing. Processing means they've already come across the border. Once again, their jobs are not to process or commit to aiding and abetting. Katie Hobbs, Adrian Fontes, and all of our law enforcement, you are in violation of Title 8 USC 1324, the failure to fulfill the duties imposed by Article 4, Section 4, which has triggered Article 1, Section 10, Clause 3, which reserves to this state the right of self-defense. Invoke Arizona's constitutional authority to defend and protect itself. Because of your violating your oath of office and dereliction of duty, among a string of other offenses, we, people, demand enforcement of Article 1, Section 10, Clause 3, which reserves to this state the right of self-defense, which gives us the constitutional authority to defend and protect ourselves. Please protect our borders. Don't continue the chases, Sheriff Danels. Get all these retired military people, deputize them, and stop the craziness. Thank you.
The next person is in person, and it's Sandy Trul.
Hello, Sandy Trul from Sierra Vista. District 1 voters are being disenfranchised by the Board by then playing keep-away with the chairman position and just passing it back and forth between District 2 and 3. District 1 voters are not represented in this Board of Supervisors. The elected officials who are violating their oath of office need to step down. The December vote that set up 18 vote centers for the 2024 elections violated state statute. The Board needs to return to 55 precincts in-person paper ballots to ensure election integrity. Precincts are supposed to count the votes. Counties are supposed to run elections, but instead, Runbeck, Dominion, Eric, and ESNS handle most elections. No oversight, no chain of custody we can verify, no checks and balances. People need to wake up. Americans have died for the vote. Our elections are unconstitutional. Third-party corporations are not to be involved. Ballots shall not be counted in secret. Corporations interfere with chain of custody. Elections are to be one day, paper ballots, voter ID, and no mail-in ballots. The entire election system is fundamentally designed to control the outcomes, and we, the people, are not involved in these outcomes. Never worry about who will be offended if you speak the truth. Worry about who will be misled, deceived, and destroyed if you don't. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nancy Olmstead, and she's on Teams.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Olmstead. I live in Wetstone, and I thank you for this opportunity. I am using this platform to speak today against Senate Bill 1221, sponsored by Representative Gail Griffin and Senator Kirk, which creates basin management areas to legislate our water rights. This bill is clearly an erosion of our rights by our state government. Phrases in the bill include annual allocation, if a person is entitled to use groundwater, entitled, maximum amount a person may use, allotment granted, shall notify the director, whoever that is, the director shall grant. Let's see. We're supposed to favor a bill that replaces our existing water rights to be regulated by an authoritarian government which determines what new rights we have and how we are permitted to use those new rights. Quoting the father of our Constitution, James Madison, government is instituted to protect our rights. Jefferson said the government should protect our rights, not take them from us. Yet SB 1221 violates ARS 49-206, titled Preservation of Rights. Quote, "This chapter shall not be construed to a bridge, that is limit, under common law, nor shall any provision of this chapter be construed so as to a stop," in other words, to prevent a right or claim "of owners having groundwater or surface water rights." Am I suggesting no regulation? No. It is an established fact that unrestricted agricultural water use and redistribution of our county's water represents the vast majority of excessive water depletion. My point is, water management should first regulate water exploitation rather than the taking of our water rights. SB 1221 is not a solution. quoting Gail Griffin from her article published last fall titled "Rural Groundwater Controls Bills Are Bad." Yep, I agree. This one is bad. The hearing for this bill is Thursday. I urge everyone to register their disapproval. Make them do better. As citizens, we deserve better. Otherwise, the next resource our government could restrict just might be air. Thank you.
The next speaker is in person, and it's Christian Sawyer.
Good morning. I'm Christian Sawyer. I lived in the Douglas Basin for three and a half years until property I was living at was sold in June, but I hope that after one of today's agenda items, I will be able to claim again to be a Douglas resident and move back into that area from where I've been staying with friends here in Visby. I wanted to talk about the Douglas AMA briefly and offer some perspectives on it that maybe some people are unfamiliar with. The Douglas INA, which was established after the Groundwater Management Act, originally had 57,000 grandfathered acres in it. Around the time of the designation of the AMA, only about 22,000 of those acres were in production. But as anyone would tell you, you started to see more and more of those inactive acres being bought and put into production, typically orchards and often owned by investment companies from California. The overdraft in the Douglas Basin is roughly 3 to 1, with 60,000 acre-feet of water being used annually against 20,000 acre-feet of recharge. And if those extra 35,000 INA acres had made it into the AMA, we would have risked doubling the rate of overdraft, doubling the rate of decline of the water table. So I think just off the bat, the AMA does something really important, which is limit the progression and acceleration of groundwater decline so that there's at least a little more hope for the future in terms of sustainable water supplies. But I think we can do better and develop a management plan that is incredibly incremental over the course of, say, 70 years, which moves us into sustainable water use and stabilizes our water tables before it gets so low that both residents and small farmers can no longer economically afford to do agriculture or just live off the private wells or community wells. I think a lot of people will think that's ambitious and aspirational, and I would agree, but I've researched it and analyzed the situation for over a year and a half now, and I will be making a video to present to all of my fellow Douglas Basin residents what that plan might look like so that if people agree with it, it can be supported at the upcoming ADWR Management Plan hearings. I want to agree with Nancy Olmstead that SB, what is it, 1221, is a bad idea, and I'd love to talk with Nancy more about that. But I also want to make the point that throughout the history of American case law and all the way back to English common law, water, groundwater, surface water has always been considered a public resource, and it needs to be managed in a way that everyone has fair, reasonable access to it. The idea that it is private property is a legal fiction. Your well is private property, but the water is not. Thank you.
Next is in person, and it's Paul Barble. Would you get a little closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
For all you Rhinos and Democrats across America, and especially in Arizona, more to the point, Maricopa County and Cochise County, your lack of intellect means you need to go back to school and get an education on computers and all these machines. Our computer experts, Dan LeChant and Seth Keschel, give your computer experts an F. All machines nowadays are digital, and digital is connected wirelessly to all devices, which means none of them, especially those used in the election process, are secure. All machines are connected to the Internet, which is wireless, and which is how all the telephones that you carry in your pockets and your purses function and can be hacked and have been hacked and will continue to be hacked. So the only way to have a secure election is with no machines. I can take any of your cellphones and hack into all wireless devices, so don't be telling any of us educated American citizens that election machines are secure because they are not. No machines means election integrity. Machines mean election interference, unsecured devices, fraud, theft, and corruption. English and Judd, who the hell do you think you are? You are our servants. You work for us with election integrity, not Katie Hobbs or Adrian Fontes. And when we make demands for the good of the people, you do our bidding. We wanted secure elections with election integrity and voting precincts, not voting centers. Then you two, after the October 1st deadline, made a change to the opposite of what we wanted. That was illegal. You broke the law. September 12th, Item 15 was a no vote, which means we got the 55 precincts. So I say once again, you broke the law and illegally got your voting centers for Judd. We also wanted Tom Crosby as the chair. Judd showed her true colors and nominated English. She's really a fraud, a Democrat portraying herself as a Republican, totally unethical and corrupt, just like our county extreme DUI attorney. She slapped all of us in the face by nominating English against our wishes. I might suggest revert that vote and the nomination or suffer the legal consequences. One day, one vote, voter ID required, hand-count paper ballots, smaller precinct polling locations, no machines, no mail-in absentee ballots except for military-disabled, those who cannot be at the polling stations. Winners announced the next day. And my last closing remark, I oppose Griffin and 1221. You don't fuck with our water. Have a good day.
The next speaker is in person is Kim Depew.
Good morning. I'm Kim Depew from Sierra Vista. This Board needs to rectify its violation of ARS 16411A. In September, you voted against vote centers, thus defaulting to precincts. In December, after the October 1st deadline, you voted for vote centers and against precincts. This is confusing, to say the least. The September agenda item was to approve or disapprove vote centers, not postpone the matter. There are myriad exceptions in the statute to adjust precincts and vote centers for good cause as close as 20 days prior to a general election. It is clear, listening to the September BOS meeting audio, that Ms. Judd's concerns were only about how many vote centers there should be. Her distrust of the county attorney's opinion was apparent. Instead of amending the motion to include another precinct in Bowie or propose a sensible combination of precincts and vote centers, she simply voted no. The BOS can indeed adjust vote center numbers or a combination of centers and precinct polling places later, as stated by Mr. Correa. For his part, Mr. Correa failed to warn the chair that the October 1st deadline was looming, and they better vote to utilize vote centers or face the default of 55 precincts. Well, so be it. Precincts is a good option, a victory, in my opinion. Why is this such a battle? Do we have to yell at and sue each other? A.G. Mays is trigger-happy with a lawsuit as long as it serves her petty, obscure purposes. Should she sue you for violating the October 1st deadline, which is a clear violation? This is important. It's the difference between yet another questionable election concentrated in large, congested vote centers or one administered by small groups of trustworthy citizen poll workers who know and recognize their neighbors in precinct. Can't we have a conversation about this? Here's what I would do if I sat in your place, Madam Chair. I would read the Call to Public Announcement carefully. I would read ARS 16-411A for myself. Then I would exercise my authority as chair to direct the staff to study the matter. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the call to the public that I have. The next is we have a presentation from the County Attorney's Office, and I believe we'll be representing, let's see, Catherine Barney is here. Christine Roberts. I know you have some others over there, but you two are doing the presentation?
Yes.
They're just the cheering section. Okay.
Chair Crosby, Supervisor. Judd, with this opportunity to come in, as we do once a year, to give you an update on our legal stats and trends and some of the work we've been doing for the county over at the County Attorney's Office. Again, I'm Christine Roberts. I'm the chief civil deputy of the County Attorney's Office, and I have with me Catherine Barney, my most senior paralegal. So to start off, one of the things, one of the areas that we work with at the County Attorney's Office is adoptions. You can see that this year, we've worked on 35 adoptions, You can see that this year we've worked on 35 adoptions, slightly a little bit of an increase from the year before. We also work with the public fiduciary and the system with their investigations. There were 14 public fiduciary investigations this year, and out of those investigations, there were four appointments for guardian and/or conservatorship. There was also one probate case handled with the public fiduciary. One of the other important matters we handle for the county are the tax appeals. This year, in December of 2023, we received seven tax appeals. Four of those seven were small tax appeals. The other three were, sorry, four of the seven were large tax appeals. Large tax appeals, which is 57% of what came in, and the other three were small tax appeals. This is significant because the large tax appeals require a lot more work than the smaller ones, and we're noticing a trend in the receipt of large tax appeals. Last year, we had nine of 10 tax appeals. We work on tax foreclosure cases. As you can see, we had 193 tax foreclosure, taxing foreclosure cases that we handled for the treasurer's office, and that is the highest number of taxing foreclosures we've had over the last number of years. It's a 9.65% increase from our highest year in 2020, and it's a 21% increase over the last two years. Bankruptcy cases, we've had six bankruptcy cases, and we do excess proceeds cases and eminent domain cases. We did not have any eminent domain cases, but we did handle 20 excess proceeds cases, which again is increasing. You can see the trend of the increase in these over the number of years. We handle elections matters. We've had three elections challenges this year that we've handled. We do merit commission cases. There were none this year. Civil Rights Commission cases, we've had none this year. We also handle claims for the county. The county received in the calendar year 12 notices of claims, and of those 12 notices of claims, six of them were resolved by the county attorney's office in-house. The other six were referred to the Arizona County Insurance Pool, our insurer. We handle the lawsuits that come in against the county. There were six new cases that came in. Of those six new cases, we've sent one over to the insurance pool to handle. We've received three district court cases that we're working on. One of the other areas we handle is public records. This year, with our all-time high year for receipt of public records requests, we've had 493. That's a 23.56% increase from last year, which was previously our highest year. So the trend is to receive more and more and more of these public records requests. We work with the sheriff's department on their public records request. They received 3,608 this year, an 8.18% increase over last year and their highest year. And if you look from 2018, the increase in public records requests have gone up over 200%. We work with community development services and planning and zoning. There were, we do the planning and zoning enforcement and violations. There were 445 violation complaints in 77 hearings. Community development were able to resolve 428 of those complaints, and there were 77 hearings on the complaints. They referred to the county attorney's office. Three this year. We filed nine different zoning enforcement complaints this year. We've received judgments on three. There were 10 dismissals because we were able to get them settled or they were taken care of before they went to judgment. And then three cases that we were able to resolve prior to actually filing a complaint in court. And at this point, I will hand this over to Catherine Barney. To go.
June, good morning. Happy to be here. So for calendar year 2023, we had 179 total mental health cases. That's a 5.92% increase from last year, which was previously our highest year. Of the 179 total cases, 16 of those were changes of venue, meaning that they originated in different counties and then were later transferred to us. Cochise County filed 163 petitions for court ordered evaluation, which is the document that initiates a Title 36 case. Of those 163 cases, 46 of them went on to the next phase called a petition for court ordered treatment, and 33 of those cases ended with an order for treatment being entered by the court. Of the 163 petitions for court ordered evaluation, which we filed, 16 of those were on inmates in the Cochise County jail. 128 of the petitions that we filed ultimately were dismissed. This outlines the reason for the dismissals. Forty of the patients ended up going from an involuntary status to voluntary admission, and so the case was dropped for that reason. 60 was because the person did not meet the Title 36 criteria. Seven cases were withdrawn, meaning that we did file a petition for court ordered treatment, and circumstances changed, and we later withdrew the petition. 12 cases expired. If the order for a casodial evaluation is not acted on within 14 days, that case expires on its own. One case was dismissed because of emergent medical needs of the patient. Five cases were dropped because of a failure to submit the second set. Sometimes that boils down to not being able to meet the statutory deadline. Three cases were dismissed at the hearing. So we took 46 cases to a hearing, and of those 46, 22 of them were contested hearings. Later, when a person is put under court ordered treatment, if they require continued stabilization, we do what's called a revocation, and we are able to put them back in an inpatient setting to be stabilized. We filed 111 revocations, and we had 33, these were patients that had multiple revocations. This shows us our mental health facilities. We are happy to report that the majority of our patients are able to stay local, and they go to Canyon Vista Medical Center. This is helpful to keep them close to their social supports, but also helps our law enforcement officers so that they don't need to transport people to Tucson. We do have, on occasion, we need to send people to Tucson when we have inmates. Canyon Vista is not able to admit inmate population, so those individuals go to CBI inpatient tool in Tucson. We had 18 of the, I'm sorry, 13 of those. And then we do also use Banner, UMC, Pallaverty Hospital, and Sonora.
Brian McIntyre, our county attorney. There's me. I'm going into my 15th year of practice. We have our new civil deputy, Denise Riden, who started with us in December. She's practiced for over 30 years, and she's getting up to speed on all things Cochise County. Paul Correa, who has been here over three years and has been practicing for 27 years. Denise and Paul are off handling hearings and doing stuff that need to be done, so they aren't here today, but they send their support. We have Susanna Stark, who is my legal supervising secretary, office manager. Catherine Barney, my senior paralegal. We have Samantha Brott, who is our paralegal who specializes in public records requests. They've been with us for six months. Deborah Losi, who's been here going on to seven years now, one of our most skilled paralegals. And Luisa Cota, who joined us in September as additional paralegal, working on a lot of the planning and zoning stuff. As for our clients, we represent all, you know, the board. We speak with the county directors. We represent the assessors, the public fiduciary, the recorder's office, the sheriff's office, the superintendent of schools, the treasurer. Our nine county clients are adoptive parents. We represent Cochise College, the special districts, the mental health agencies, and this is just the snapshot of everything that we do and all the things we've worked on in the past year. By no means is it all inclusive. There's a lot on here that we do that's not included in the list, but just to give you an idea of what's going on in the legal industry and where the trends are going. At this time, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Ms. Judd, you have any questions?
I did have a few, but they were quite a ways back. So I think I'm just going to pass on them now. Well, actually, let me ask one. So when you went through the violations, the code violations, wasn't sure I saw a category for ones that are in the works. I know that there's a couple of major ones in my district, and I just kind of want to recognize you and your hard work that you do. All of them you did accomplish, and then there's still some big ones looming, and I'm reminding you and thanking you at the same time. Thank you.
Is that planning and zoning you're referring to?
I think she's talking about the zoning violation slide that we have for planning and zoning. It has the number of complaints we filed, and those take quite a bit of work, and we have been working on them. They were on the back burner for a little bit as we had other pressing matters we had to work with, but we're getting caught up on those. And I'm aware of the ones that you're referencing, supervisor Judd, and they are being worked on, and they are in the pipeline.
Thank you, and I appreciate how you respond whenever there are questions. You're giving a lot of information, so we know you're working on it, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
I'm getting a question.
This is, I think it's my page six, tax appeals. And I was wondering if you would care to speculate on why there's a downward trend is the tax appeals? Is, would you think it's the reverse of property values going up? Or should I ask Mr. Line Deck or Congress?
Yeah, I would have a difficult time explaining to you the reasoning why. We're trying to understand even the shift from going from smaller tax appeals, which were like properties, residential properties under $2 million, to now these larger tax appeals, which are coming in for like major, like commercial properties. I think, you know, if I had to take an educated guess on it, it's a product of the economy of what's going on, but I really don't have anything definitive on that.
Okay. Well, that's what I would speculate also. Ms. Barney, on this page, it says involuntary mental health revocations, and you talked about patients with multiple revocations. So I'm wondering, would you say, or is there some point that in the, as far as the red bars on the graph where you're talking about somebody becoming permanently considered unable to stand trial and so on? If you have, like, how many, how many multiple revocations does it, does it take to say, okay, this is permanent?
I'm going to answer that from the start. So, because that's more of a legal question. Unfortunately, the statutes aren't written in such a way where someone is going to be deemed permanently involuntarily mentally committed. There is a procedure for us to go through the process, and they work with their doctors, and their doctors will send in a form whether or not that needs to be continued or not. The revocations are people going off of their medication and then having to be brought back inpatient to get them stabilized, and that yearly plan, they can only do it a year at a time. That yearly plan gives us the ability to bring them back in, because there's no such thing as being designated permanently involuntary mental health. Now, you mentioned something about being incompetent to maybe stand trial. That's a totally different issue. That's a rule four that they use in the criminal issues where someone's deemed not competent and unable to understand what's going on in a procedure, criminal procedure. Oftentimes, those cases are then referred out to us to see if we can do a Title 36 evaluation, that there would be no such thing as a permanent designation.
Okay, so I just made this note. Tell me if this accurate, if this is accurate. It's related to, but not the same as the criminal criterion.
Right. It's two separate things, two separate issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Great presentation, and we look forward to it each year so we get an idea, because there's, none of us are lawyers, so we depend on you to handle these things. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we have the regular board meeting, and the first item is consent agenda items one through three, and I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll go ahead. I move that we approve consent agenda items one through three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous. We now move on to action items, and the first one is from the board supervisors. Laura?
Sorry. Madam Chair, can we have a motion to?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the over the counter sale of tax deed properties set forth in the attached exhibit A plus related administrative fees.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board, beginning on January 8th of this year, five parcels that did not receive a bid during last year's tax deed land sale were offered for sale via an over the counter sale. Bid and payments were received for two of these properties, as noted in Exhibit A, totaling $4,125, $4,075 for the parcels, and then plus a $25 administration fee on each one. Board staff is recommending approval of these two bits.
Any questions, comments?
Not disturbing.
And I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. So next is the county attorney. Motion on a grant agreement, Ms. Judd.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve grant agreement between State of Arizona Department of Public Safety, DPS, and Cochise County Attorney's Office, CCAO, in the amount of $10,000 for fentanyl prosecution, diversion, and testing effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Monica, you're here too.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Monica?
Good morning, members of the board. Good morning. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. As part of the county attorney's office's efforts to provide equal access to the diversion program, our office requested funding from DPS, the Department of Public Safety, to cover the cost of drug testing for the participants of the Cochise County Drug Diversion Program. We also requested funding to purchase two fentanyl exposure response kits for safety.
Any questions or comments?
What is in such a kit?
It, right now, the information that we have is a safety kit. It's so that if we have any type of exposure, we will be able to utilize the material to clean that area so no one else can be exposed to it and have safety procedures in process.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you. I'll call for the vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six. Got an MOU.
Madam Chair, I move we approve memorandum of understanding MOU between Tunnitito Children and Family Services and Cochise County School Superintendent's Office, CCSSO, to establish the Cochise County School Superintendent's Office of Behavioral Health Consortium, CCSSO BHC Grief Support Group, effective November 15th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that motion.
I have motion and a second. Charlotte, you want to explain to us how this works?
Yes. Good morning. Thank you. Our team took a training through Tunnitito in Tucson back in November to help students and even staff with issues surrounding grief. And I'm not sure if you're aware, but we have had four student deaths here in Cochise County this school year, and the grief training is not only for death, but also for separation. For instance, children who are apart from their parents who may be in jail or prison, those who have been deployed. Also for children who are going through a severe illness or their parent is going through a severe illness. or their parent is going through a severe illness. So we're seeing a lot of issues with grief across the county. And this MOU would allow us to utilize the curriculum from Tunnitito's Grief Conversations Program and also give us support from their trained professionals if should any incidents come up that we aren't aware of, that we need some help with. So that's what we're asking, is that we can enter in this MOU so that we could work with them to help the kids and staff across the county.
Tom, reasonable? Any questions or comments?
I was wondering if this is going to be affiliated with the sheriff's office, which was going to do the same type of personal intervention team?
They do lots of wonderful work, and we work hand in hand with them. They usually work with individuals. These would be grief conversations that say a school could invite us in to meet with students who are having problems or with staff that are having problems. So if any of our partners from the care team wanted to join us, we would definitely welcome them. But this specific MOU was for our team and the work that we did for that training and that we would like to do going forward.
Thank you.
Any comments, Ms. Judd? Questions?
Well, I don't see any cost or obligation except for just the space and the hard work that you do on this. Is that right? There isn't really any cost to the county or even the department? Just your work and your effort, so?
It's setting up a relationship is all, you know, so that they have the ability to call and have conversations.
Correct.
And even if there was a cost, I still think it's valuable, but I'm 100% behind this. I think it's very important. Thank you.
So vote yes. Okay. We've had a chance to discuss it now, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Let's move on to the county treasurer. Looks like you've had the elves working a lot here. We've got 100 of these today. Can we have a motion?
Good morning, board.
Yes. Ms. Trey, wait, hold on. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the recommendation of the county treasurer for the abatement of property taxes and interest on personal property and the removal of personal property tax lien on treasurer's certificate of clearance, number 2024001 to 2024101.
Second. Okay.
All right. Good morning, and I do apologize for the vast number of them. And you timed that really well, Ms. Judd, on appointing Ms. English to be the chairman, because now she gets to sign these. What, I know once you review the paperwork involved here, you'll see that there are many of them that are repeats. They've come back to us to be presented again. A lot of the older years, when we abated these over the past two years, because by statute, the assessor has to actually make a field inspection to verify that what we're writing off is really not there, we ended up having two more years of taxes accumulate, even though the previous years were abated. So these are to clear up all of the old ones that we've already processed. But because the assessor was still assessing them, even after they were abated for taxes, we have to go back and clear off the taxes now for the ones that have already been basically deemed unworthy or unable to be found or just derelict.
Any questions, comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
No, thank you.
I think the main thing that I want to say is, thank you for cleaning up the rolls. Because when things are on the rolls, then the people who participate in the taxes that we bring in have expectations. And if those are not going to be taxed, and the money's never coming in, then those expectations are wrong. So anytime we can get our property tax rolls clean, then the expectation is that we're going to be able to bring in about 95% of those taxes for the organizations that expect them. So thank you, Kathy.
My pleasure.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have from Health and Social Services. While testimony is coming up, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Amendment 2 to Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA CTR 060269, Immunization Services between the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, and Cochise County Health and Social Services, CHSS, for July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Okay, now I have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Supervisors. This is a previously approved IGA. We are asking that Amendment 2 of the Immunization Services between Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise County Health and Social Services be approved for July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. The IGA amendment revises Exhibit 1 through Exhibit 5 to reflect the extension date through June 30th, 2025. CTR 0060269 is a cost reimbursement contract that reimburses Cochise County Health and Social Services for the costs of implementing supplemental flu vaccination activities, improving vaccine cold storage capacity and data entry, and enhancing the Vaccine for Children program and COVID-19 activities. We ask your approvals for this respectfully.
I do have some people who wish to comment on this from the public. On item number eight, one person who is not speaking is opposed. And I have two people who wish to speak on this. Kim Depew?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, my name is Kim Depew. I live in Sierra Vista. I oppose Cochise County involving itself in immunization and other health programs that rightfully belong in the hands of family doctors. These intrusions into the private sector by the county rob private practices of their livelihood. The county is not equipped to discern the individual needs of patients. The goal of public health is control, conformity, and depersonalization. It has proven again and again that a government program is never as efficient as a private sector endeavor. Government-sponsored programs operate on a one-size-fits-all basis and belittle those that don't stay within the lines. Remember COVID. This amendment, IGA, contains money to promote COVID vaccine uptake. Post-vaccination reports are revealing terrible side effects. Cochise County should be avoiding the risky business of vaccines. Cochise County accepts as normal and inevitable that we use federal funds in providing public health. It is neither. Read an IGA when you have an hour to waste. That money is not free. The agreements are fraught with controls, demands, and immoral strings attached. Personal health privacy is now obsolete. Please pull the plug on our bloated health department. Restore the doctor-patient relationship to our citizens, and I thank you.
The next speaker is on teams, and it's Sam Sigaloff. Are you there, Sam? Can you tell if he's on the line?
He's on Teams. If you can star six to unmute yourself.
We can tell he's on the line?
He's on Teams. He can unmute himself at any time. So you'd have to unmute yourself to be heard. We cannot hear you. We can't unmute him on our end, so he'd have to unmute himself, so.
Well, he wanted to speak, and he was opposed. So we have before us item number eight, which is to approve Amendment Number 2 to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Immunization Services. We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. People that want vaccines can get them from private providers, and I'll be voting against this.
Any other comments, questions? If not, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
We have two for and one against, so that means that it is approved. And so we move on to item number nine. So let me have a motion for the next IGA.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve intergovernmental agreement, IGA CTR 068849, Sexually Transmitted Infection Investigations between the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, and Cochise County Health and Social Services, CHSS, in the amount of $61,161 from January 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Myra?
Good morning. In addition to reporting prevention and control measures stated in Arizona Administrative Code Title IX, Chapter 6, Articles 1, 3, 11, clinical services at Cochise County Health and Social Services will continue to build upon the current infrastructure to continue to provide surveillance, disease investigation, prevention. And these interventions include ongoing offering, screening, and treatment for chlamydia, gonorrhea, syphilis, and HIV. We continue to provide partner services and link our clients to care and promote community collaborations with healthcare providers around the county to continue to provide screening and treatment and make sure that they're getting the care that they need.
Any questions?
Are these sexually transmitted disease infections, are they also transmissible by sharing needle use?
Yes, they could be.
Okay, every one of?
Not every one of them, but yes, there are some.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Myra. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further comments, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. We move on to state and federal legislation, which we try to post so the public is aware of the legislation that we're aware of. Mr. Karwachka, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Crosby, Supervisor Judd. We are continuing to recruit poll workers. At this time, we are specifically targeting experienced poll workers to serve as the inspector or lead at the following two vote centers, which is Palomino's and McNeil. So please, if you have that experience, contact us on our website, apply. And in addition, we're also looking for individuals at the Wilcox location. There's two positions there. At the Bowie location, for one position. At the Alfreda location, for one position. St. David, one position, and San Simo, two positions. So we are still actively looking for help. So anyone, if you reach out to friends, family, anyone in the community, to let them know that we still need help with poll work.
Thank you. Okay, let's look at current events. Supervisor Crosby?
I will pass. Thank you, ma'am.
And I will pass, Ms. Judd. Current events?
I'm going to pass also. Thank you.
Okay. Having said that, then the next meeting for the Board of Supervisors will be today at 1:00 in the Board of Supervisors' hearing room for a work session regarding Public Works Department informational update. Thank you all, and I'm sorry for the delays, but we need to make sure that people could hear and we could get a recording of what was happening.